The order for the Sutter County Planning Commission, our regular meeting date of January the 20th, 2021. I have a short statement that will read into the record and as a result of the continuing threat of COVID-19, the coronavirus, the Sutter County Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via web-based virtual meeting over the internet and may be accessed by PC or smartphone. Access to the live streaming of this meeting can be provided at the following link at youtube.com/c/countyofsutter.ca. And persons may provide written public comment during the meeting that will be read into the record. And just as an aside, as of four o'clock this afternoon, which is the time indicated, that those comments would be made available to the members of the planning commission. I understand from Mr. Libby that we had no comments at all, at least as of that time. That still correct, Mr. Libby?
That is correct. And as of actually this moment, we haven't received any additional comments.
Crystal, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, I am. Are you guys ready for me?
Yes, could you please do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Manuel. Commissioner Doscher.
Here.
Commissioner Marler.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Shannon. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Libby, we have excused absences for Commissioner Shannon and obviously for Commissioner Davitt. Is he technically still assigned as District One? Or is that now gone until Supervisor McKelley makes the decision one way or the other?
Yes, you are correct. When Supervisor Solinger's term ended, so did Commissioner Davitt. So we are awaiting an appointment from the new supervisor.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Campbell, newly appointed Commissioner for the Planning Commission out of Supervisory District Number Four, Supervisor Carm Baines. Welcome.
Thank you all very much. I'm looking forward to serving with each and every one of you and serving the county.
Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda is election of officers. Item three A is the nomination and election of chairperson for calendar year 2021. Chair remains open for nominations for the position of chairperson for 2021. We can also do this by an indication that the vice chair will move into the chair's position. That's agreeable with the other question?
That works for me.
Agreed. I'll take that as a motion and Mr. Campbell's as a second to that motion. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item three B, nomination and election of vice chairperson for calendar year 2021. Chair is open for nominations for the position of vice chair for 2021. I may have to nominate Crystal. Gary, I don't know what your work schedule is like.
Yeah, it's kind of sometimes a hike. I can't always be available. I probably wouldn't have the extra time that it takes to do that.
Yeah.
But thank you.
You're very welcome. Then we'll leave the vice chairperson's position temporarily open, at least until we get a representative from District Number One, and then we'll revisit this on the agenda when that particular appointment happens. Appointment to the, as a representative to the City of Live Oak Planning Commission, that also will remain vacant and be brought back to the commission when Supervisor McKelley appoints somebody for his planning commission appointment, seeing that District One serves the City of Live Oak and make a determination as a group at that time who will be representing us on the Live Oak Planning Commission. Appointment of a representative to the City of Uta City Planning Commission, just a little background on that, that is probably a little bit busier than the Sutter County Planning Commission as far as a dedication of time. Obviously, it's a municipality, a lot more projects are coming through, and they seem to be experiencing a significant amount of growth, which is rare at the climate. But you should know that in case anybody wishes to nominate somebody else for that position on the Uta City Planning Commission. Are there any nominations for that position? Hearing none, I'll make the recommendation. As the vice chair on this commission, I've also served as the county representative to the Uta City Planning Commission, and I have no objection to continuing that. It might be easier for me to do that, considering the job requirements of the other members of the commission. And I have no objection to that if somebody wishes to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that you can continue. That's Jerry.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stewart for continuation of my slot on the Uta City Planning Commission. Is there a second to Commissioner Stewart's motion?
Oh, second.
Kerry, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you, Kerry. We have a motion by Commissioner Stewart and a second by Commissioner Marler that will remain on the Uta City Planning Commission as the Sutter County representative to that commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried unanimously. And...
So, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that we inadvertently left the Pledge of Allegiance on the agenda. I apologize. I apologize for that because we, we don't have a flag immediately in front of us. So, we actually, hey, we do.
There you go.
Perfect.
All the benefits of home. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag, please. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic of America, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I like that, Mr. Chairman. Flags on demand.
Okay. It's just like Toulon RF. Next is item number five, our gentle approval of minutes. This will be the approval of minutes from our meeting of December 16th, 2020, which was held virtually. Are there any discussions related to the minutes that were presented by Crystal? Hearing none. And this is a point for Commissioner Campbell. Even the fact, and this is kind of strange, but even the fact that you were not here during the course of this meeting, the health and the government codes allows you to vote approval of the minutes if you so desire. So, you can either do that, or you can abstain, but we can only have one abstention, or we have to bring this item back as well, because we wouldn't have enough to pass it. Just as a point of review. They're pushing to approve the minutes of our, I'm sorry, it was December the... Was there two sets of minutes, Crystal?
No, there was only one set of minutes.
I've got...
Should be December 16th.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval for the minutes of December 16th?
Motion to approve the minutes is...
Have a motion by Commissioner Marler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I will abstain.
We have three in favor, one abstention, the motion passed, approval of minutes for December the 16th. Any comments from the public? The audience watching regarding topics not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission may do so at this time. However, no action may be taken on items not appearing on the agenda unless provided for interstate law. Anybody in the queue waiting to talk, Crystal or Mr. Libby?
Nope.
Thank you very much, both of you. Item number seven, project number U-20-017. This will be a public hearing. A tentative parcel map to divide five acres into three single-family residential lots ranging in size from 1.11 acres to 2.78 acres. R1A, single-family residential agricultural combining, located at 8388 South Butte Road, Sutter, California. Assessors' partial number 14-291-003. Applicant is Logan Terry. Owner is C.A. Nevis Farms Incorporated. A negative, a medicated, negative declaration has been prepared. Staff ready for their presentation?
Yes, planning commissioners. This is Steve Geiger, planner with Development Services. So, I'm going to be giving the presentation on this first item tonight. And if you just bear with me a minute, I'm going to pull up our shared screen and pull up the slides here. Okay. Hopefully, you all can see the slide on the screen. Now, it's showing the study sketch and the aerial photo. These are included in your, your packet. But the subject parcel that is subject to this application is a five acre site, and it is developed with a residence, a detached garage, a shop building, and a barn. The property is located within the rural planned community of Sutter, and it's bordered by almond orchards to the north and residential uses to the east, south, and west. Now, with the residences that are located on similar or smaller sized parcels to the west, east, and south, staff considers this an infill project. So, I want to touch on just a few issues here, and those are highlighted in your staff report. First of all is, is the issues of drainage, water, and wastewater regarding the project. So, new development on the proposed lots is required to address its drainage impacts, and the project engineer has provided preliminary drainage calculations for the project, which demonstrate that the site is capable of accommodating drainage created by the project, including peak 10 and 100-year storm capacity without impacting the neighboring properties. The Engineering Division has reviewed the calculations that were provided and found the conclusions acceptable. The tentative parcel map shows proposed locations of drainage wells near the shared property line of proposed parcels two and three, be in this region here, this area. These drainage wells will serve as detention basins that will hold drainage water and release it at a rate that does not exceed existing drainage off the site. The applicant is required to conduct a drainage study to address specific detention and drainage needs, and prior to recordation of the map, the applicant will be required to construct the private onsite drainage improvements. Total of water for the existing residents that's located on proposed parcel one is provided by the Sutter Community Services District, or the CSD. The two new residences proposed on parcels two and three will also have water. The two new residences proposed on parcels two and three will also have water provided by the Sutter CSD. The CSD has provided accounting with a will-serv letter indicating it will provide potable water for the project, subject to payment of the capacity fee along with the connection fee. No new infrastructure is required to be installed for the project to be served by the CSD, and payment of the capacity and connection fees is addressed as a condition of approval for the project. Wastewater service will be provided through the use of individual onsite septic and leach field systems that will be designed and installed under permit that's administered by Development Services Environmental Health Division, in compliance with state law and local ordinance requirements. The Environmental Health Division has reviewed the project and will require that the MUSDAs, or Minimum Usable Sewer Disposal Areas, that are on record for each lot, remain unimproved and, and reserved exclusively for onsite wastewater needs. Regarding traffic, subject property is a double-frontage lot, it fronts on both South Butte Road to the north and Marshall Street to the south. Access to the existing residents on proposed parcel one is from South Butte Road, and access to the proposed parcels two and three will be from Marshall Street. South Butte Road is classified as a rural collector, and Marshall Street is classified as a local road by the Sutter County General Plan. The general plan technical background report lists an average daily traffic count of three thousand six hundred and twenty and a level of service B for this section of South Butte Road. The proposed project is anticipated to generate approximately nineteen additional daily trips to South Butte Road and Marshall Street. This additional amount of traffic is minimal, and it will not result in a change to the current level of service. The proposed project is consistent with the county's general plan, including general plan goal LU one and policy value four, four point one, four point two, and M two point five from the land use and mobility. These general plan goals and policies are specifically addressed in the recommended findings section at the end of your staff report. So staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the conditions that are included within the staff report, and this concludes my presentation unless the commissioners have any questions.
Commissioner Stewart, do you have any questions with Mr. Geiger?
No, sir.
Commissioner Marler?
I do not.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, sir, I do. Mr. Geiger, question regarding the, the drainage improvements that are required for parcels two and three. I understand that there's an, an agreement that's supposed to be put in place and will be, if I understand correctly, recorded against a parcel map. What, what happens in the case that those, those drainage improvements are not maintained to the level that's required? What authority does the county have to make sure that they are maintained and preserved?
Sure, sure. I'm probably going to defer that question to Scott Riddle. Scott, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yeah, thank you. Did you hear the question?
Yeah, I heard the question. So the agreement basically binds the drainage to the lot, and if the drainage is not maintained, the county can basically come in and enforce code, code enforcement on it, which would allow us to, that'd be basically ease against it. If all else fails, the county could come in and actually do the work to maintain the, the facility, or to restore it to its condition that it needs to be in order to deal with the drainage.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it. No other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Is the applicant present, is it, or applicant representative, is that you, George?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, we don't, we, we are in agreement with all of the conditions of the approval, and we have no remarks. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Massalim is the representative for the applicant. Hearing none, we'll move forward, we'll open the public hearing. This is the standing place for anybody, or any member of the public that wishes to comment on this particular project, to speak before the planning commission. Crystal or Mr. Libby, is there any indication that there's any member of the public that would desire to speak with us?
Nope, I do not have any at all.
And we have no public comments submitted through the, through the email system.
We've closed the public hearing, bring it back to the planning commission. Is there any discussion by any member of the planning commission, starting with Commissioner Stewart? Anything you need clarified or wish to bring up to the other members of the commission about this project?
No, sir.
Commissioner Marler?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion. The motion can be as easy as suggesting the approval as per the recognition by county staff in the staff report. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve project U dash twenty dash zero one seven as presented.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Marler, is there a second to Commissioner Marler's motion?
Second.
And that was Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please, on that?
Commissioner Dasher.
Yes.
Commissioner Marler.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you very much, that passed unanimously and it's approved, consistent with staff's recommendation of the project. Public hearing, item number eight, is project number U dash twenty dash zero one eight. A tentative parcel map to divide, divide a forty-acre parcel into a five-acre homesite parcel and a thirty-five-acre agricultural parcel, AG twenty, agricultural twenty-acre minimum. Eleven eight seventy-seven Larkin Road in Live Oak, located on the northeast corner of Larkin Road and Riviera Road, northeast of the city of Live Oak. Assessors parcel number zero nine zero one zero zero four three. Applicant is Harmon Sohal, and the owner is Jaginder Sohal, and a negative declaration has been prepared. Staff?
Yes, thank you. Casey Murray, Associate Planner, and this project is a tentative parcel map to divide a forty-acre parcel into a five-acre homesite parcel and a thirty-five-acre agricultural parcel. I'll bring up the slides here. The site is located at the northeast corner of Larkin Road and Riviera Road, northeast of the city of Live Oak. The site is zoned agriculture and is designated as agriculture twenty-acre minimum in the general plan. Surrounding area predominantly consists of walnut orchards. Proposed homesite parcel is developed with a residence that is served by an individual well and septic system. The remainder of the homesite parcel and all of the proposed agricultural parcel are developed with a walnut orchard. The proposed parcels have frontage on Larkin Road and Riviera Road, which are both county-maintained roads. The general plan density allows for two permanent residences on the subject property. No new building construction is proposed by this project, however, one additional residence, as allowed by existing general plan density, may be established on the agricultural remnant parcel. This project will create one homesite parcel, which is consistent with county general plan policy AG one point eight and zoning code section fifteen hundred dash zero five dash zero four zero. No additional residential development beyond what is currently allowed and was analyzed in the twenty thirty general plan, EIR, will result from this project. This project is consistent with the requirements of the county's subdivision ordinance and the subdivision map act. This project meets the county's requirements with regard to road frontage, lot width, and number of parcels. An initial study was prepared for this project. Study determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment, and a negative declaration was prepared. Notice regarding the negative declaration was circulated for comments, and no comments were received, and staff is recommending that the planning commission approve this project with the financing and the conditions listed in the staff report. And we'll entertain any questions may have at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. It's time for questions of Mr. Murray, if you have any, starting with Commissioner Stewart.
No questions.
Commissioner Marler?
None from me.
Commissioner Campbell?
None for me, sir.
And none for me either. Is the applicant going to appear, you know?
Uh, yeah, this is Julio Caniharo from Milestone Associates, representing the owner, and we are agreeable to the conditions and have no further questions. Can we answer any questions for you guys?
Commissioners have any questions of representative of the applicant?
No questions.
Hearing none, thank you, sir. Open the public hearing, time and place for members of the public to speak in front of the commission relative to this particular project only. Crystal, is there anybody online?
Uh, no, there is not.
And Mr. Libby, you're looking, I take, at something different than Crystal's?
Uh, yes, our email system to see if any other public comments may have been submitted, and there have been none received.
Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the pleasure of the commission. Is there any discussion about this project, Commissioner Campbell?
No, sir.
Mr. Marler?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Chair will entertain a motion for project U dash twenty dash zero one eight at the discretion of the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve project U dash zero dash zero one eight as presented by staff.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marler, is there a second to his motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Campbell. If we have a roll call on this project also, please, Crystal?
Yes, Commissioner Dasher.
Yes.
Commissioner Marler.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
This particular project and the motion carries unanimously with the planning commission. We move on to other business, item number nine. This is, most of us know about Robert's Rules of Order, which is something like four hundred and sixty-seven pages long. I talked to Mr. Libby towards the latter part of last year about going to Rosenberg's Rules of Order. I don't think you'd notice anything different, but it, instead of four hundred and some odd pages long, it's only seven pages long, and the majority of the elected appointed boards and commissions within the state of California go by Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Charter cities obviously have a little bit more latitude and whatnot, but it's just so much easier, in my opinion only, if we want to Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and I'll open it up to Mr. Libby for your discussion and where we could go from there, and your opinion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that actually great introduction. Our Board of Supervisors chose, when they updated their policies and procedures in January of last year, they chose to begin following the Rosenberg rules. And so I thought it was an excellent inquiry from the chair to possibly have our commission look at following them. As noted in your staff report, most of the changes deal with how motions are handled, and we included with the Rosenberg rules at the top of the attachment in your staff report, kind of a cheat sheet of, of the differences in what you would see. So if the commission is amenable to this change, at this point, staff is not looking for action, so this is not an action item. We would look for some just general direction from the commission. We would then go back and take a look at the commission's rules of procedure, make sure there's not going to be any conflicts, and then we'll, we'll insert some language in the commission's rules of procedure to adopt the most current version of the, the Rosenberg rules, and then we would bring that back at a future meeting for action at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Libby, for the information of the planning commission members. How we operate now is basically a hodgepodge batch work of what's been working apparently well for us over the course of years. It's been tweaked here, tweaked there, but it doesn't follow any really prescribed order format that the commissioners, I would think, would be comfortable with as far as making, I think there's a couple of additional motions that commissioners could make for clarification, and it talks about how you can challenge a motion and whatnot. None of that happens to be within our bylaws now. Is there any questions that the commission members, starting with Commissioner Stewart, that might have of me or Mr. Libby?
No, but it certainly sounds like seven pages versus four hundred plus, and certainly might be easier for all of us to understand how to proceed, so I would be in favor of moving to Rosenberg.
Thank you. Commissioner Marler?
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, if we could cut down and make it a lot easier to understand, I think that'd be great.
You sure you wouldn't want to read Robert's Rules of Order for us just to make a presentation at the next meeting?
Well, I, I was already at page two hundred and ninety-eight.
Another volunteer.
I, you know, the only question I have for, for staff is, is there any legal review from, from the, the county that would be required to implement any change on that, on that particular matter?
Yes, so what would, what staff would do is, basically, I would go back and look at our, the commission's rules of procedure, look how best to implement it, and then I would be working with our county council's office to review that and then bring it back to the commission.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Is it the consensus of the commissioners that we would like Mr. Libby to do specifically that, bring that back at a meeting? Hearing no negatives, I think that's the direction that we'd like to go, Mr. Libby.
That is fine, I will, we will, staff will go to work and bring that back to you at a future meeting for further consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number ten A, possible cancellation of the first meeting in February, that would be February the third, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending cancellation of that meeting. That would mean our next meeting would be February seventeenth, and we will have items on your agenda for that meeting.
Okay. Item number ten B, any kind of...
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting, could we have a motion to cancel that meeting?
Oh, certainly. I'll make a motion to cancel the February third meeting, and the next meeting will be on February the seventeenth. Is there a second for the motion to cancel February third meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Stewart, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Other business from staff, Mr. Libby?
Um, the only thing I would note, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, after our lakeside at Sutter Point project was approved in November, we're going to be sitting down with the developer group tomorrow and looking at next steps, and so I should be getting a better idea as far as their timeline, as far as implementation of, of that project. I also wanted to note for the planning commission that we are in the process of updating our housing element, which is a statutory requirement. We are on, you have, there's two cycles, and we're going, you have a five-year cycle and you have an eight-year cycle, and so we're going for the longer eight-year cycle that we currently are on. It saves the county money in the long term, and so we have a consulting firm that we're working with called Ascent, and they're helping us. But next week, on the twenty-seventh, in, from five thirty to seven, we're going to be holding a, a public workshop, it'll be virtual, but the public will be able to come in and comment and provide feedback regarding topics pertaining to our housing element. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. If you go to the county website, you would see a link where you can even register, and you could come in to be a fly on the wall and just observe to see, see the presentation and to see what people say, and then staff is planning on bringing that to you this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. As far as business from the Uta City Planning Commission, we have not met since our last meeting as the Sutter County Planning Commission. I did get a readout of all the projects within the incorporated city limits from Dan, over the city today. I'll give you information to Mr. Libby tomorrow, and he in turn can send it out to you just for information on what's happening within the city limits of Uta City. Projects that have been approved, projects that have been applied, come through, just so you have an understanding of what the city of Uta City is currently doing. And Mr. Libby, I'll try to get that to you before noon tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, any other business or comments by any members of the commission? Uh, any other business or comments by any members of the commission? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That was really fine of you, Commissioner Stewart. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second that motion, sir.
It's seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting's adjourned. Um, Mr. Campbell, thank you again for your willingness to volunteer. That is very much appreciated, and we do have a really good group here under, uh, guidance of Mr. Libby and Crystal and everybody, and it's, it's, uh, it's very rewarding, in my opinion, from the years of...
As I stated earlier, I'm, uh, I'm excited and honored and, um, looking forward to representing District Four and Carm and, uh, serving the community, so thank you. Appreciate it, and thanks for making me feel so welcome, so.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Crystal, do you need any other information from the commission or myself before we conclude tonight?
Nope, I have it all.
Perfect. All right, everyone.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.